Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Anacortes Planning Commission to order. Ms. Gleichman, would you please take the role?
Commissioner Mills?
Here.
Commissioner McCombs?
Present.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
Commissioner Martin?
Here.
Commissioner Stoneman?
Here.
Commissioner Juretsky?
Here.
Commissioner Courier. And Mr. Courier has emailed us that he would not be here today, so he would be excused. The next thing on our agenda are the minutes for 5:22, 24. And I know I have one little change to it. What about the rest of you? It's a small change, but it matters. It's on page two, about three quarters of the way down the page. The paragraph starts, "Commissioner Martin referenced SCOG population methodology." It looks like, and it says, "Ten percent that would normally be allocated to rural areas was allocated to the municipalities." And that should be ninety percent. So, it's a big difference. So, any other changes to the minutes? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman?
Mr. Mills?
I move to approve the meeting minutes of May 22, 2024, as amended on page two, to change the percentage to ninety percent from ten percent.
Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as amended for 5:22, 24. All those in favor signify by just saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved, and thank you for your, Ms. Gleichman, very detailed minutes. Okay. Next thing on the agenda, number three, is public comment. This is an opportunity for anybody in the public to speak. We would ask that you would come up to the podium, that you would state your name and your city, and we will happily give you three minutes.
Hello. My name is Bill Turner. I live at 2812 I Avenue, Anacortes. I'm here to start with, I just wanted to address the RCW 94, 95A, which had done some research, and it clearly states to me that we should, the city should adopt 95A, and the planning commission work under that rule. I think they're working under the old 55, without an A. And so, it makes, it's much more clear in 95, in 35A, which is passed in the nineties, that the planning commission is an essential part of the comp plan. I mean, it even has language in there. Okay? So, I appreciate you guys are making more momentum to put more onus on you guys, because this is where people can come talk. I think it's a lot different, in my experience, than talking to the city council. And so, I applaud that effort, and thank you, and I hope that you can get the city council to adopt 35A. Okay. And then, the other thing is ADUs. There's just so much about ADUs. I've got a, I recently acquired four or five pages of what to do with ADUs, you know, in your community, you know? Because the new RCW is coming down from the state. And there's so many questions in there that need to be addressed about wetlands, or about which R1s, or R2s, or R3s, or R2As, how many you could put on it, and what. And so, in order not to cause grief in the community, it might be nice if you guys really flesh that out, and, you know, before the end of the comp plan, so that there won't be any issues about who gets to put an ADU in front of you. And I, I built a lot of houses here, and I can tell you, people may not be excited about having an ADU go right in their front, or wherever. And, but I believe in them. I really want to, want ADUs, so I'm not opposed to them at all. But I think it's going, in order to get them to move a little quicker and easier, it's been my experience that if we address those issues now, it'll be a lot easier. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Good evening. Ian Muntz, 1711 Quail Drive, Anacortes. Lived in that address for forty years. It's an area, it's zoned R1, and it is primed already to accept additional development once the staff figures out what special circumstances are. About sixty percent of that entire 300-acre zone is actually wetlands, wetland buffers, streams, stream buffers. And the city was good enough to actually provide some protections last time around for individual wells having aquifer protection areas. So, there's very little development potential. I'm using that as an example, but I think the, what's really happening is that the city wants to make everything permitted as right, which basically excludes the neighbors from commenting, from having a meaningful discussion. During my years working for the city as planning director from '81 to 2008, and Don Measor continued, things were conditional uses, so neighbors were consulted. I mean, this notion that you could have a grocery store next to you by right, I'm not sure there's a polite term to use for that. People in Anacortes will not like that idea. And then, I go on to say that, if I still have time, that when you recommended going carefully and slowly on the so-called middle housing, it was very important that you recognize that cities under 25,000 have to do nothing. The legislature said, "Small towns are special. They don't have to be ballered. They can develop their own style." So, there's really no urgency. I'm totally in favor with more dense and more affordable housing, but this is Anacortes. It needs to be done carefully. And what the city council is doing is taking everything away from the public and putting it in the planning department, and hope they get it right. I made thousands of mistakes that were corrected in public meetings and public hearings. A neighbor would come up and say, "This line's wrong." So, that input is invaluable, and it makes people feel they're part of the community. My final point is, the city feels free to propose having increased, aligned cottage housing in the R1 zone, but is it cottage housing, like the housing across from Islandview Schools, or is it the housing next to the store? Big difference. One looks like cottage housing, the other doesn't. And people care about their communities. And I, so, I keep saying final, but you haven't cut me off yet. So, what I'd love to see is a schedule from the planning department saying which items are coming up when, because I got the latest version at four o'clock today. So, on today's PowerPoint, I'll have a written response for you by your next meeting, because some of the things I just can't accept as being accurate. And I hope you keep this discussion going, so I can get that information in. And then, finally, where's the public schedule, so people know that they're going to have a duplex next to them? Nothing wrong with duplexes, nothing wrong with having it next to them, but is anyone going to tell people, "This is what's proposed"? Or is it all going to be on your shoulders, and two years from now, people go, "Where did this come from? Well, the planning department recommended it. Council Planning Committee likes it." I mean, this Housing Assistance Plan isn't, it was billed in the public notice as being some ideas to mesh with the other goals in the comprehensive plan, like quality of life, protecting wetlands, protecting, it's supposed to be balanced, but in my private opinion, because I get to have them these days, city council is going overboard, trying to open up development in a way that no, the people I know in town have no idea this is going on, none. I think it's very unfair to put this on your shoulders without community meetings, both in my neighborhood and across the city. I worked for Tacoma for eleven and a half years after being here.
Thank you, Mr. Muntz.
Thank you. And, can I finish my sentence?
Yes.
So, and we had three or four community meetings a week. They're mentioned in the PowerPoint. Tacoma is mentioned as having done some good work in middle housing. It took ten years, and three or four meetings a week, community councils, neighborhood meetings, homeowners associations. Thank you, you've been very gracious.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to the planning commission? Come on up. If you would please state your name and the city where you live.
Yes, my name's John Wilkinson, and live in Anacortes. I had actually tried to send a comment to the comp plan at cityofanacortes.org, and I got back a message permanently blocked. So, I don't know how many people are trying to comment, and it says, "Permanent failure for one or more recipients." And then, the site being blocked, so somebody can look into that. Anyhow, since I'm here, I thought I'd bring that to your attention, and thanks for all your efforts. What I'd actually sent was interested, the recent Anacortes American, the Port of Anacortes, issued a map, because they're trying to do some electrification of some of their operations, which is all good. But the map they showed was of diesel pollutants around the city of Anacortes. It kind of spurred the question about, is the comprehensive plan recognizing the kind of interface areas between residents and industry? And noise pollution has been an ongoing issue, at least at the intersection of the port and Cap Sante area. But, you know, I think it's all very well and good, we all want a thriving city and mixed housing, et cetera, but if there isn't recognition that those industry residence areas need some kind of transition zone, and some enforcement of noise and other pollution levels, and you can build houses, but people won't want to come and live in them if it's not a good environment to live in. So, anyhow, if you can check into the website, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay. I don't know what's going on over there, but we'll just keep on going. Item four is public hearings, and I understand we don't have a public hearing at this time. So, we are on to 5A, 2025 Comp Plan Update, Land Use and Housing Regulatory Concepts Presentation and Discussion.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Libby Grage. I'm planning manager in the Planning Community and Economic Development Department, and I'm just going to give a quick introduction before I hand it over to our, the city's consultant makers to go through the presentation. Wanted to just quickly show this slide again, what shows the overall timeline for the 2025 Comprehensive Plan update process. We are here in late August, in the, still in the shaping the plan phase. There's been lots of information gathering, analysis, public feedback gathering, going into, coming up with proposals for potential revisions to the policies and the various comprehensive plan elements. And then, you can see, we've got the planning commission having work sessions and public hearings on those elements through the end of the year and even into 2025. This is the tentative planning commission review schedule that we shared at the last planning commission meeting, and once it is in a little more finalized state, we will put this up on the website, the 2025 Comprehensive Plan website. Tonight, August 28th, as you know, we'll be talking about land use and housing regulatory concepts, and then into September, the topic will continue to be land use and housing through the end of the month. I just wanted to give a quick plug to some of the public engagement and outreach that's still going on. Right now, there is a transportation element survey that is open right now, so you can go to the Comprehensive Plan Update webpage, or planacortes.org, to get a link to that survey, and take that. City staff will be at the farmer's market this Saturday, so hope to see you there. A-Town is our town newsletter is coming out in September, so that'll be hitting mailboxes and sometime into September, and that edition is in, almost entirely dedicated to the comprehensive plan, so getting, getting the word out, and lots of good information in that. And then, we don't have the date nailed down yet, but there will be another open house in late October. So, we hope to have that date finalized by the time A-Town is our town goes out into the mail, so everybody will know that that's happening. Okay. So, that's all I had to say. If nobody has any questions for me about scheduling or anything like that, I will go ahead and turn things over to Bob Bangford and Marcus, I think Marcus Johnson, who are with Makers Architecture and Urban Design, and they are consultants on the land use, housing, and economic development elements of the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Libby, and good evening, planning commissioners. It'll just be me, as Marcus is in another city doing a presentation elsewhere, but you'll see him next time at the next meeting. In fact, this is, as Libby probably stated, one of three planning commission meetings where we'll dig into these land use issues. And, Libby, it looks like I'll probably just share my screen, right? I guess I'll just try to do that.
Yes, you should be able to, Bob.
Okay. Bear with me, folks. Okay, I think you can see the slideshow. Let me get this in order here.
Mr. Bangford, just a quick question before you get going. We had a presentation on the land use findings, I guess, back in May with Andrew, I'm sorry, I can't remember his last name.
Andrew Oliver, from Leland.
Yeah. I'm just wondering how you're connected with him. Are you the same organization or different?
Andrew is, Makers is the lead firm on the update here, and Andrew is from Leland, working with us. He's managing a lot of, he's doing the demographic and housing analysis and economic-related analysis, so his efforts are kind of supporting ours and the larger effort. We're a team together. Yes, thanks.
Thank you.
Good question. Okay, do we have the right screen on? Do you see the full screen, or do you see the double screen? I can never tell which one's working on your side.
It looks to be the correct one, Bob.
Okay, good, good. I'm going to keep going into, so just going to have a couple background slides on growth and permitting, and then we're going to dive into the discussion items, the, some of the regulatory concepts. And I think you've probably seen this chart here. It includes many of the items directly from the HAP, with the recommendations from council on which things we ought to move forward with, and which things to exclude, which things are required. So, the stuff circled in green are the things we're going to try to hit tonight at this meeting, minus the couple items they've recommended to exclude, and the stuff below it we'll get into next time with Marcus, in addition to the map, some of the map change items and proposals. Although, the one other thing that I wanted to add was, there's some ideas about integrating some neighbor, more neighborhood commercial opportunities and corner stores, and I did some background work on that and wanted to bring that up tonight, since I won't be at the next two meetings. So, a couple of the background, of course, you know, and you probably, probably already know these stats, but Anacortes is projected to have nearly 5,000 more residents by 2045, and that's, represents seventeen percent of the growth of the county, and equates to just under 3,000 more housing units, and jobs. And of course, it's projected to have over 3,100 more jobs in that same timeframe, approximately fifteen percent of the growth. So, naturally, going to need to find a place for folks to live, and that's part of why we're here, looking at the zoning and some of the opportunities. So, the other side of this is the permitting. You know, we did a lot of zoning changes. I had the benefit of, of working with the city and Libby on the last comp plan, as well as making the code updates, and vastly increasing the capacity, and looking at other options to integrate a greater mix of housing types. But still, if you can see the chart here, 2021 saw a big increase, but it's declined since then, I guess, probably in big part due to the increase in building, construction costs, as well as, I imagine the interest rate had something to do with that. But we've had just over 1,100 units permitted since 2013. There's been an increase in ADUs and middle housing types, and the multifamily in recent years, but overall, we're not, we're not on an annual basis meeting the need, given the population estimates and projections on the last slide. So, to meet those, we would need 128 units per year, but we've been getting, at least in this timeframe here, only 101 units per year. So, if you look at the chart there, only, only 2018 and 2021 met that requirement, and of course, last year was way, way below that. So, it's not, you know, not just, you need to do a little bit more, in other words, probably, to get the rates going up. So, that's why we're looking at some of these options, and mostly going to be looking at building on what came out of the HAP, which was approved in January of last year. But I will, do want to say that a lot has actually changed on the statewide front in housing, particularly in the middle housing front since then. So, Washington's House Bill 1110, which I'm sure you all know about, became effective in July of last year, and 77 cities statewide are subject to that bill, not Anacortes. In that, of those 77, of those 77 cities, it's broken down into three different tiers of cities, each with their own unique set of middle housing requirements. And I would say that Anacortes is most close to the last tier, tier three, and that includes cities less than 25,000 population within a larger connect, earth, urban growth area connected to a larger city. And in those cities, you must allow duplexes by right in all residential zones, and not have, you know, bigger lot sizes than single-family homes, for instance. And Makers has been working with Commerce. We helped, helped produce the model ordinance for middle housing, as well as a user guide, working with Commerce and a stakeholder group from those 77 cities. And we're, we're working on refining that, as there've been some trailer bills to clarify HB 1110, and also, just a lot of questions have come out. So, we're, we're working on updates to that model ordinance and user guide, and those are going to come out, actually, in the next few weeks, probably. But we're also working with about seven different cities, applicable cities, on middle housing ordinances to basically implement, and to make sure that those cities comply. But we're also working with, like you, Anacortes, but we're working with two other cities. One is, that don't have to comply, but they are choosing to comply, just because, just because the challenge that are faced with growth and providing housing for workers in the community, and, so this kind of, Washington's...
Excuse me, Mr. Bangford. Do you, we have a commissioner with a question or two. Do you want us to wait until the end of the presentation and then take the questions, or would you like to take them all along?
If it's a question about the HB 1110, I'll take it now. Otherwise...
It is.
You know, it's probably up to the planning commission chair, how we want to do it, if we want to keep it, if we want to keep it loose, or if we want to kind of get through it and then discuss. So...
Why don't we, why don't we go ahead and take, because it is related to that legislation, and then we'll go from there. I'm recognizing Mr. Stoneman.
Thank you. So, Mr. Bangford, I just want to make sure I understood on the HB 1110, so it doesn't apply to us. So, when you said that the tier three is most applicable to Anacortes, but we're not actually tier three, you're just saying that's the closest to us? Okay.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry to interrupt.
Yes, because...
We'll just go the rest of the time through your presentation, and then we'll take questions.
Okay, okay. So, again, here's a list of, well, you've got some cities that went out and did this before HB 1110, Spokane, Walla Walla, and Kirkland, just because, again, they felt a need to make some changes and allow more housing, because the housing prices were rising, they were just feeling impacts all around. And then, we're working with these six cities that are listed here, from Auburn to University Place, and figuring out where they want to go. Some cities are just doing the bare minimum, some cities are going beyond it, and we're also doing, you know, design standards to make sure that the homes kind of fit within what they, what kind of character they want, but there are some limitations as to how far you can go with those. And then, again, working with Aberdeen, I was there last week presenting their draft residential provisions, and they're allowing a triplex on all their single-family lots, but they require a bit more parking than other places. Bingen, again, they're doing it as well. Bingen's down by Hood River, but has just had a tremendous housing crunch because of the popularity of that area, and workers are traveling 60 miles from Golden to, to take some of the service jobs, and it's just brutal. So, they just feel a need to do what they can to provide more housing opportunities. And I know that Anacortes is struggling with some of the same things, with the hospital folks having a tough time finding housing locally, or teachers and such. So, let's dig into the HAP issues. So, going down the list, Strategy 2.1.1 was to allow cottage housing in the R1 zone, and the, under the current comp plan, it says cottage housing may be allowed under certain circumstances, but those circumstances aren't defined in code. The current plan also says densities in the R1 zone, up to four units per acre, but anything above base density of two dwelling units per acre must be through a special review process, but that review process is not defined, at least in code. So, the HAP had proposed cottages to be permitted use, and cottages, just to remind you of what the provisions are, they're limited to 1,200 square feet, you know, they're clustered these small units around an open space, you have to have at least three in a cluster, and each cottage counts for a half unit for density purchases, so you can get two-for-one discount. So, if you've got... So if you've got a, if you've got a lot, then it's twice the size of the minimum lot size of the R1 zone, you could get four, equivalent to four cottages in that. And so the scale of them, you know, there's no, there's no limitation in the R1 zone for how big a single family home is, as long as you meet the setbacks in height. But the equivalent of cottages are limited to 1,200 square feet. And so, you know, two cottages, which are equal to one regular dwelling unit, are limited to 2,400 square feet. So just for some context there. So again, should I, should I keep going on all of these and we come back maybe down the list? Because otherwise, maybe it's hard to get through everything.
Yes, let's just keep going. I see head nods here. So yes.
Okay, because there's quite a bit. And that way you can kind of figure out what you, what we want to comment on. Okay, let's keep going. 2.1.3 is about allowing triplexes and townhouses by right in the R2A zone. So right now, they're, they're conditionally permitted as duplexes used to be. But some of the provisions are unique. When you look at the HAP, we say only to do this for lots with alley access. Another unique provision is a condition of allowing them by right is to say that, like a triplex or fourplex, the individual units, you would limit this floor area of those units to either 1,000 square feet or 1,200 square feet. And then those would count as a half dwelling unit, just like cottages. And you would limit those to no more than four units in one building. And, but I will say we'll have a related discussion on these zones, the R2A and the R3 on duplexes regarding lot size minimums later, later on, that kind of impacts this provision a little bit. But it's definitely something that we should talk about. The next item, reduced barriers for group living uses. And by that, I mean, we mean assisted living and nursing homes. So the proposal here is for assisted living, they're now conditionally permitted in the R3, R3A and R4A. So those uses have to jump through some of those hoops of a conditional use permit. You already have some design standards and all your zone standards to apply to these. So the suggestion here is just simply make those permitted uses just subject to those same set of standards that are already in place. Same thing for nursing homes, but they are, they're conditional in the R4. So in the R4 zone, proposal here is to make those permitted by right. And I believe those would be subject to like the multifamily design standards, if I'm not mistaken. The next item here is adult family homes, and I'm just going to read this, make sure I don't mess it up. But there's some new state legislation as the HAP acknowledged that, that provides the way for adult family homes to have seven or eight beds. So a little bit, you know, because these are permitted in single family zones like the R2, R2A. And it says the standards and definitions under 194320 should be updated accordingly. And really, there's not too much to do here. It says that the legislation requires that they be treated as a single family homes for regulatory purposes, but that they not be physically designed as detached, single family homes. But they're still subject to those zoning standards. It's not, they don't get a free pass from setbacks in height, for instance. Next item here is prohibiting new large, single family uses in the medium and high density zones. Another way to clarify this is maybe just simply looking at prohibiting single future or new single family homes in some of those districts like R3 and R4, which make up, you know, a small fraction. But those are where some of the highest allowed densities and, and where your biggest pool is to accommodate growth. So if you allow these low density uses, you're limiting your capacity for increases. So a suggestion in the HAP as a starting point was to prohibit new single family uses in the R3A, the R4, in the R4A, but still allow them in the R3 zone. And what I would say, when I looked this up, on the right there is an example, it's your R4 zone between, sorry if I mess up the street numbers. I think that's between Q and R, if I got that correctly. South of 22nd there by the roundabout. So you could see that there's some open land. And if there's a concern about, like, if you have a really small lot existing there, let's say that's smaller than 4,500 square feet, what you could do is say that, well, the, you could say that they're prohibited on lots larger than 4,500. So essentially, that would allow you to still build a single family on a small lot and not be forced to build a duplex. But on, on most of the, most of the lots or the larger ones, you certainly want higher intensity uses. So that's the starting point and an additional suggestion there. Duplex cottages. So this is 2.1.8 and a half. You currently allow duplex cottages in the R3, R3A and the R4 zones. It's already been used in at least two projects since the 19 update. And the proposal here is to simply just allow duplex cottages in all zones where cottage housing is allowed. And, and I'll say, like I said, in the R1 zone, you know, the biggest cottage, even if duplex cottage, the biggest one you could possibly have is 2,400 square feet. And I'd be willing to take a guess that your average new, single family home size is much larger than that. Just a guess. Okay, so 2.1.9, single room occupancy housing. This says to define, permit and set standards for those. So, you know, it's the old school style of housing where you've got like dorms or hostels, smaller rooms where you might have common kitchens and bathroom facilities as a more affordable housing option. It'd be some, something that's becoming more common. And state legislation has come out on this and I'll get into the, to the next slide. And they generally refer to this as co-living. And that's a first suggestion to simply change, not use the term SRO as that old school term that's got mostly poorer connotations, but use the co-living housing term. So here's an example photo where it's a kind of a studio. They might have a microwave and they've got their sink and everything, but they've got, they usually share a kitchen space and other amenities. As it says here, they usually include kitchenettes, very small and maybe even some private, small bathrooms. This housing type is not specifically recognized in current code. The closest thing you have is rooming house, but that is defined as a dwelling with a central kitchen and with more than one, but fewer than nine borders. So that's something that's much smaller. There's, you know, there's no upper limit to the co-living other than your height and density, other density provisions. So co-living House Bill 1998, which was enacted this year, basically says that jurisdictions must allow this use on any lot within a, within an urban growth area. So that includes Anacortes. It must be, it must be permitted where you permit multifamily and more than six units in a building. So our recommendation is simply to replace rooming house term with the new co-living term, update the definition and allow by right in the R4, R4A, CBD, C and MMU. And those are all zones where multifamily, actually five plus is the way you kind of term now, is allowed. So that's pretty much, you have to do it. So this is our, our approach of how to do that. And some examples, they come in all shapes and sizes. The one on the left is a smaller one, four homes and 26 units. Then you got another one there with 17 units, three story building and then a more urban CBD oriented building with 78 units. Okay, so 2.1.10 gets into supportive housing, which is also based on a recent House Bill that you, you'll need to make some changes on. So it refers to residential facilities intended to house individual and families experiencing imminent risk of homelessness. So that includes transitional housing, emergency shelters, emergency housing and primitive supportive housing. There's, the bill's got definitions of those. And House Bill or RCW 35A 21430, which was enacted in '21, says that cities must allow this, again, wherever multifamily is allowed. So our, our recommendation is, is pretty similar to make it, add supportive housing use category defined with the four subtypes and allow for by right in those same zones. Okay, now we'll, we'll start going into Strategy 2.3, which gets into ADU regulations. And you may need to make a few tweaks here to comply with the, the ADU Bill 1337. And those are to, not only do you need one, you need to allow two ADUs by right in all primary residential zones. And you also need to remove the owner occupancy requirement. I remember lots of discussion on that about seven or eight years ago in the code adoption update. But this time it's a requirement that you remove that. And, and also you need to clearly state that only one parking space is required per ADU, and that's also in HAP. Okay, so now we're going to shift gears a little bit and get into, we spent a bunch of time in the HAP on the duplex provisions. And largely because in, in, in most of the residential zones, you, you allow duplexes. In fact, you, you now allow them by right, but you need to have extra acreage to meet those. So in the R2A zone, well, first of all, you could see the four options that were in the HAP that we set forth. But again, lots, lots has happened since then. And because HB 1110 passed and because what all these other communities are doing, we recommend you start with this option three. And that's, that would be allowing duplexes by right on the same lot size as single family dwellings, and that's 6,000 square feet. The current standard is you need 9,000 square feet to get a duplex. So most lots, you basically can't do it. You have to have a double lot or an extra bigger lot. So there's really not many locations that you can do it. And I can't remember if I mentioned, here we go. So here's, I added a couple of examples, just illustrating duplexes on lots close to 6,000 square feet. So here's an example with alley loaded lots, old school with the garages on the alley and some usable open space. And, and these would also meet your design standards for duplexes. And then here's a couple of front loaded options. You got an example here where you've got a shared driveway and either have a single car garages or those could be tandem, but you got covered entries and you got usable open space in the back. And then you got a single story option where you might have a parking spot here. And maybe you don't have a garage and you got some open space in the back. Again, you've got some design standards already in place. Perhaps, you know, in updating this provision and, and given what we've done with the middle housing design standards and the model code, there might be some tweaks or extra things you might look at. But just acknowledging that you do have some pretty good protections here to make sure that these duplexes fit into the neighborhood fabric. Then the other part of this is, you know, as you know, just because you zone it, it doesn't mean they'll come right away, because all the property owners are going to have to make these decisions and make their risks and get financing and hire architects and contractors. And it's going to be incremental, you know, even the Seattle's and the Tacoma's of the world realize that you might have a setup where after 20 years, you might only have four, three or four duplexes or middle housing setups on a block, just because it's hard to do this stuff. And it's a property owner choice. So just important perspective. So pretty much a similar thing for the R3 zone. Again, we set forth the three different options for the R3 zone. Right now, your minimum lot size for single family is 4,500 square feet, but you need 7,500 square feet to get a duplex right now. So our, our suggestion again is to kind of follow the tier three cities setup of HB 1110. And that is to allow a duplex by right on the same minimum lot size. It's going to be harder to get a minimum, to get a duplex on 4,500 square feet. But you could definitely do it if you've got an alley where it's easier to fit parking in the back. So that would be our, our minimum starting point. Of course, you can potentially go further and that would be again, adding, as I mentioned earlier, maybe adding a triplex or even a fourplex if the units were smaller. Because one thing I'll bring back up is back when we updated the code back in 2016, 2017, we looked at integrating floor area ratio or some provisions to manage the mass of homes and duplexes. And after studying that and looking at it, you know, there is some complication with FARs. And a lot of cities, you know, more, some are choosing to do it now, especially with middle housing. But many just don't want to go there because it's just another layer that they need to administer. And maybe they, if they can get by with just having height setbacks and some other things that they would prefer to keep it simpler. But by doing this, by doing both maybe option three and four, at least for tri, if you allow triplex and fourplex, that's when maybe you do want to put just limits on how big the units are, because otherwise you might be getting into something out of scale with allowing that many units. So just a thought. And then straight from the HAP. And then the R4 zone, it's the same story, but your minimum lot size is 3,000 square feet. Again, suggests the same thing where you, where you would have just the same minimum lot size for a duplex as you have with a single family. A couple other R4A, another R4A, except a proposal here from the HAP was eliminate the reference if you're requiring additional lot area or additional dwelling units beyond a duplex for the R4A zone and just simply let parking, height setbacks guide the, the massing. And then another thing that's not in the HAP, but seems reasonable, is consider raising the base maximum height for the R4 zone to, from 40 to 45 feet. And the bonuses from 50 to 55 feet, which might just allow a little more flexibility. You know, it's, it's not really going to get you an extra floor. Yeah, because I think it's assumed at the 40 foot that you can squeeze in four floors. But if you've got a pitched roof, probably not. You're going to have like a partial gabled roof top floor and it kind of forces a flat roof by the way you measure your height. So by adding five feet, it just allows a little more flexibility to get the pitched roof lines, taller floor to ceiling heights that people like, and just a little more flexibility. And just on the right, just showing examples there, you've got a flat roof building. Again, that might, that might meet your 40 feet. But again, the pitched roof here, that probably gets to 40 feet and it's just three stories. Okay. Uh, one last thing, so, um, some neighborhood commercial options. Um, you do have a current, this is not in the HAP, but it's actually a policy in the current comp plan where we say to allow some compatible non-residential uses in the residential zones, such as appropriately scaled, uh, neighborhood, uh, grocery stores and other uses, uh, that provide a place to gather and, and, and services and maintain standards in the code for locating and designing these uses in a manner that respects the scale and character of the neighborhood. So, uh, current code allows for a neighborhood grocery store, uh, with a conditional use permit, uh, except for the R1 zone. So you gotta jump through the CUP hoop, uh, but you can, you, you're limited to 1,200 square feet, uh, retail sales, uh, net floor area and 3,200 square foot gross floor area. And then you, you can't do grocery store within a quarter mile of an existing grocery store. So it's got these protections, so some options. So you've already got, and, and another side issue is you've already got two of these, um, non-conforming older uses, uh, including the store, um, in the R2A zone, uh, just north of, south of the roundabout, and then Steinman Grocery, um, which is in the R3 zone, has been there a long time. Um, so the store is about 3,600 square feet. Steinman Grocery is about, at least the ground floor, uh, about 2,500 square feet was my guess based on Google Earth. And, um, so, so, you know, one is looking at, well, should we, I don't even have a record of trying to do this in our last code update and comp plan and making these conform, but as part of this, I did want to say that there's, there's been a movement statewide to try to allow corner stores like those, um, to provide more service and amenities within walking distance of homes, uh, provided they're in scale, um, with the neighbors and integrate other measures to impact, uh, the neighboring community. In fact, there was almost a, a push to put together a bill requiring this option, but it did not pass. But it's something that other communities are interested in. We're in, um, in Burien, uh, and in Aberdeen, actually. We, we've have these proposed and are now under council review. Um, so the idea here, one consideration is to allow small-scale corner stores by right in all but the R1 zone, and that's corner stores. So this would, uh, the suggestion would be to limit them to neighborhood-serving retail uses, uh, cafes, personal services and offices. And I would say limit them to 2,000 square foot in the R2. Maybe allow them to be a little bigger in the R3, in the R4, like maybe up to 4,000 or 5,000 square feet. Uh, you can limit the hours of operation, 10 PM is a common one. Uh, parking, you know, parking's a big deal and the corner lot's a big deal because corner lots are usually spots where you've got access to more, uh, on-street parking. And also there's less, um, you know, it abuts, that corner lot abuts fewer parcels. So there should theoretically be less impacts, but the parking access and the, and the visibility is a big deal. Um, so usually what we say is, is, is the uses are so small to try to not require any additional parking. That's the gold standard for this. If they really want some of these to happen, it's gonna be hard enough, given, uh, given, uh, the retail market these days and the trend is kind of against these types of corner stores. Um, and then maybe there's some other simple site building design standards that you might want to look, consider to ensure neighborhood compatibility, but I would definitely keep those simple. So some other options might be, uh, you, you might just want to zone those two existing, the store and Steinmans, to bring those into commercial. And one option is to just simply zone them commercial. You don't have a neighborhood commercial zone, so maybe you just zone them to commercial. Um, or another option is to create a neighborhood commercial overlay that allows for these uses. Although that's a little complicated because you have to figure out where are you gonna put the overlay? And maybe for now, you, you just put those on the diamonds in the store and you allow the opportunity for it. But that's not too much different than the CUP folks have to jump through right now. Maybe it's even harder. So, um, that's what we got. Thanks for bearing with me and, 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 um, hope you can remember it. And, uh, again, next time, we're gonna get into all these other items for maximum lot coverage, density setbacks, the height bonus program, um, family definition, some of the design standards that are, um, mentioned in the HAP. But, um, so I'll stop for now and I'll go back, um, to the, the beginning here and, and see where that leads to, uh, comments from you.
Thank you, Mr. Benford. That was very helpful. And I, I'm thinking, um, commissioners, what if we just go back page by page and see if you have questions for Mr. Benford? Okay, so. Yeah, they're not, they are not numbered. Questions about, um, the expected growth? Oh, yes.
I just thought I'd throw in sort of an explanation for those following at home, what's going on. I don't know that, it was introduced at the beginning. Um, Bob presented these, uh, these hap, housing action plan recommendations because the city council had, had asked the planning commission to look into these thoroughly. So, um, this is the beginning of the public processes of, of the planning commission reviewing each of the, each of the housing action plan recommendations that the city council identified as the low-hanging fruit that the planning commission should really dig in on. Um, Bob provided an overview of each of the recommendations. Uh, so the anticipated process from here is for the planning commission to look at these, hold public hearings on, uh, the changes eventually as, you know, so first you make some recommendations and then, uh, if you have recommendations, you will present those to, at a public hearing at a later date that will, of course, be advertised so people can then weigh in on what, uh, what the recommendations actually are. So right now is just the first step of reviewing and, and, uh, it's your opportunity to really dig in on these and ask Bob any specific questions that you have about how the mechanics of this might work or if there's other things you'd like to address and try to really put some flesh on the bones of these. Uh, some of these have, have pretty specific, uh, recommendation, recommended changes to the code. Others are a little looser, but it's the planning commission's opportunity to really mold these in the way that the, that they, you feel is good for an acordus. And then, of course, I wanted to remind everybody that there will be public hearings on any proposed changes.
That's helpful, thank you. Okay, let's, let's just move through the expected growth through 2045. Any questions about that? You've seen that before with the jobs. No questions, although I just want to make note that with 4,988 residents and 2,942 housing units, comes out to about 1.7 people per, per housing unit. Um, I think I pointed that out before because, um, I believe 2.2, um, people per housing unit is what we were aiming for, is a difference of around 700, close to 700. Um, okay, the next one was the, the graph about residential permits since 2013. Any questions on that one? Oh, oh, yes, Mr. Ryan.
Um, Bob, have you, what is your speculation on why we have, um, that low number here in 2023 on getting the permits? Right there, the last call on the right.
What's my assumption on that?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I have mine, but I'm, I wanted to hear yours.
I, uh, I mentioned before, I'm guessing it's the construction costs combined with the high, super-high interest rates. It's, maybe, maybe Libby's there on the ground, uh, she might be able to elaborate. Or John, too, but that's, that's my hunch.
No, I, uh, that's where, that's where I'm at. I mean, the, the valuation that I've come up with for the cost of, to build in the current market is astronomical, to meet the energy codes, the taxes, the land values, the wage increase for all the workers, the cost of upgrading city services to meet that, meet that demand. And it continues. It just becomes unrealistic.
Any other comments from Mr. Coleman, Ms. Graje? Okay, Mr. Dretzky?
Can we get an update where we are two-thirds of the way through this year as far as permits? 23 was obviously way down, what's 24 looking like?
We don't have those numbers handy, but it's, uh, it's an increase from 2023. Um, not sure if it's gonna, if we're on target for the 2022 numbers, though. Thank you.
I just have one other question, um, where it says 128 units per year, uh, on average, needed from 2022 to 2045. Isn't it from 2020 to 2045? Am I wrong about the date?
Um, no, it should be 2022, um, because the, this isn't based on decennial census. This is based on when we started the process, um, you know, looking at the population growth. Um, it was based, it started, the baseline was 2022.
Okay, that's to get to the, um, 3,000 housing units? That's starting in 2022?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, anything else on that page? Okay, uh, next page says what's happened since the HAP? The HB 1110? Mr. Stoneman?
So, sorry, maybe to John instead of Bob this time, because I, and this is just me. I was confused before, honestly. When people have been asking me about the, our plan, I've been telling them that we're just following state law. So I, I, I thought everything we were doing was mandated, you, you know, by the state, that we were following. So, so out of these recommendations, should they be broken up into like, hey, here's the things, you know, that we, that we absolutely have to do because regulations are coming down and we're trying to stay, you know, within that? And which things are just because we think it's a good idea because this is the expected population growth?
Um, yeah, I think that's totally fair. And I think that Bob did point out some of these are required. Maybe, um, maybe we could do a better job, um, of like putting an asterisk next to things that just have to be done. Like when we were talking about the ADU regulations, you can recall, he was saying that we need to, um, get rid of the owner occupancy, which we already have done. Uh, we need to allow two ADUs and we need to, uh, can't allow more than one parking space. Uh, we also, what was it, what he didn't talk about, we also have to allow ADUs to be at least 1,000 square feet. So, uh, maybe we could do a better job of pointing that out and we'll try to do that as we go through this process today.
Okay, yeah, and I, I'd appreciate that, thanks.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good suggestion.
Yeah, thank you, Jim.
Okay, any other questions on this page? What's happened since the HAP? The next slide. No questions on that one? Okay, allowing more housing types is the next slide.
Along, I guess my question, along, along the same lines, is it looks like most of what falls in the presentation here is recommendations on ways that we can increase housing, but they're not mandated by the house bill, is that correct? Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think most of them are suggestions that would allow for more housing types and make it possible for housing, easier for housing to be constructed in the city for a range of different housing types and, uh, to accommodate different range of, um, uh, pop, of, uh, income ranges.
That's correct, um, except for the couple special housing types, like the supportive housing, um, and co-living. Um, the, the couple of them have some legislation that are requiring changes. And, and I've noted that here. So if I, if I don't notice, note a bill related to it, then it's not required by the state.
Okay. All right, next slide. Allowing more housing types. Mr. Ryan?
Uh, yeah, Bob, uh, I know you're recommending that you go, hey, we're, let's get rid of, you know, I guess, rooming house might have a bad, bad sense from the past, uh, still. And then you wanted to recommend, say, hey, maybe we should refer to it as co-living. Uh, are you familiar if co-living is already stated underneath the governance of the International Maintenance Property Codes or, because the rooming house is?
You're a few slides, you're a few slides up from us here.
Oh, I was actually gonna ask it back here.
Oh.
But that's when it starts, yeah, I mean, you know, because then sometimes if we have that gray area, sometimes, you know, you get special groups in the, in our city that can potentially go, hey, it's not mandated under here, we can, we can run our own show. So I'm just making sure that whatever we're gonna call it is either, if we're gonna refer to it as co-living, it always should have rooming houses or another term that is already stated or documented within that, within those codes.
Can you state the code, the, uh, that document again?
International Maintenance Property Codes. It's, uh, regulates, uh, ordinances on the, on the way that people are living, the minimum sizes, uh, the conditions that they're living and, and, and it continues.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're on the next slide. That one, oop, that one. Questions on that one, allowing more housing types? Just a comment, so allowing these tri, triplexes and townhouses in the R2 zone permitted, meaning that neighbors would not have the opportunity to give input, correct?
Yeah, particularly curious if there's an openness to this. Um, so allowing like a fourplex provided the, by right, uh, provided the, uh, floor area is limited to 1,000 or 1,200 square feet. And letting those count as a half-dwelling unit for density purposes. So you'd have, you'd still have to have a bigger, so to get a fourplex, you'd still have to have basically a double lot, um, for dwelling unit purposes, the way this is set up.
So this is similar to the, uh, situation that came about on West Fifth, I believe. Only they were cottages, but the similar, I think it's the same zoning.
Yeah, so curious if there's a, you're curious if there's openness to a provision like this?
Yeah.
So, yeah, the West Fifth property is R2A.
Yes. Okay, um, Mr. Ryan's got a question.
Uh, yeah, Bob, uh, so you're, it's, you're recommending that we remove the process of conditional use?
Yes, that's one part of this, yes.
So that would essentially take the voice away from our community?
Well, the voice is, is kind of right now and looking at, well, if we've got good standards for these. for these, should we allow them? Is it something that you feel is important that we provide these options? So...
You know, I, I know you were referencing that, going, hey, look, I've been down in Auburn, I've been down in Chula, down in the flat valleys. This is not a flat valley. So to compare that, I went just, just to think about this, you could chew on this later on. But we've chosen places to live because this is, the community offers views. And some of those are, they're already limiting because of tree growth and other things which devalues, but our taxes still go up. But we chose to live here because we like our views. Some people have peek-a-boo views. So, you know, all of a sudden, you throw something that would normally sit in the center of a lot, and now it, you've had a view for two decades, five decades, however long that house has been there, you throw three wide, you know, it's gone. It's, it's gone, and we're not gonna get a break for it. So it can get very, very sensitive. Because I'll tell you what, somebody builds a second story in front of me, I'll build one on my house. The guy behind me, if he can't afford it, he's, he lost his view, and same with the other six people. I don't think that's necessarily, I mean, how should we play our game? So you, you think about that. I don't need, you don't need a response on that.
So the caveat on this is that provided they made special unit size and additional lot size provisions, so we can, we can make regulations saying, you know, like needs to have, you know, wider setbacks or further back from the road or something like that. Could you please stop clicking your pen? It's like, it's... The, so you have ways to do this. It's, these are suggestions. It's a, you know, it's your privilege to do these things at all, or not. And if you do want to do them, you can put special conditions on it, which will go down in our development regulations. So anybody that buys a home in this zone knows by looking at the zoning code what is going to be allowed under what conditions. And so when, when you're considering, when you're gonna buy a property, you'll know what can be built around you. And that's part of property owners' due diligence when they buy a property. And so we want to make it very clear in our development regulations and design standards what is going to, what we could, what can be built in each zone. And it is through this public process that it's people's input to have the opportunity to say what should be allowed in each zone. So that's why we're encouraging people to come to these meetings and be part of this discussion, because it is very important.
And I'll add to that. Reading the details here, you know, your, your single-family home, if you do a duplex, it cannot be any bigger than, than what the standards are right now for a single-family. You know, you've got your height limit, you've got your setbacks, you can have a 5,000-square-foot single-family home. I mean, I've got a three-story, single-family home on two sides of my houses here that just dwarfs my house. But they're allowed. And, and if you do duplex or triplex, it's not gonna be any bigger than that because you can't. The zoning limits it. The triplex and fourplex provisions here on this slide actually wouldn't be allowed if you're a HB 1110 community, because the rules there say you can't be any more restrictive than you are for a single-family. So the, the, the option to limit them to 1,000 or 1,200 square feet for a triplex or a fourplex, those individual units, you don't do anything like that for single-family. So technically, you wouldn't be able to allow that. But you're not one of those communities, so you have an option to do, use a tool like that here. So it's just an idea. You know, I, I understand how controversial this is. We're just looking at tools because we've been basically asked to look at options to provide for housing. And it's basically the city's decision on this. We're just providing some suggestions to get there.
Okay, thank you. Let's, let's move to the next slide. Allowing more housing types. This one is about group living, group living uses. Questions? Comments? Questions or comments? I, I think this one would be pretty controversial. If you allow this one as permitted outright, I know that I would want to know if I was, if there was a nursing home or an assisted living place built next to me. So, but I see that this is in the R3, R3A and R4A zones. I don't see any comments, so let's move to the next one. Adult family homes. Any questions about this one? Mr. Stoneman?
So, I, I just, I'm not sure what an adult family home is. Bob or John, just tell me what that is.
See, don't have, I'd have to go and look. I believe there's a definition in your current code, and I can't access that, that right now, because I've got the slideshow on both screens. But basically, it's...
We're, we're looking it up right now.
Okay, I, I mean, I just mean, I'm not trying to be like, you don't have to give me word for word, just in general, I mean...
You know, while we're looking, I'll, I'll explain. So these are, what's being presented are sort of Cliff Notes of what the change would be. It's not actually presented in the form of the development regulations with strike-throughs and additions showing how the code will change. When we do present that for a public hearing, we'll have that so you can look at it and understand exactly what the change is going to look like in the code. That may be helpful for you.
I, I just don't, I mean, I'm an adult and I live in a home, I assume I'm not an adult family. I'm, I'm really, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out.
I can describe what we look at when we finance one.
Okay.
It's basically a place where your grandmother might be, maybe suffering from some memory loss issues. They provide food, they provide a clean environment. The family provides any medical care they need. There's no nurse on staff at this size. That's the definition that I've seen, or that's the usage, or how they're, how they're done. And somebody else may have a different opinion about that.
That's great. Thank you.
Thanks.
That was really close, Mr. Dretzky. That was a good description. Yeah, no, the definition is in code, and it is a residential home in which a person or persons provide personal care, special care, room and board to more than one, but not more than six adults who are not related by blood or marriage to the person or persons providing the services. So, so I wonder if that also would include a halfway house for offenders? That's something different?
Like, kind of like an adult group home?
Madam Chairman? See, I was gonna ask that question. Where does that fit in any of these buckets we've talked about? Transition housing or...
Yeah, I would need to look that up, because I'm not 100% sure.
It's gonna be under group home, I think. But it's gonna be under group home. I don't have a computer, so right now Libby's, Libby's pulled up nursing homes, because that's also something that's discussed in this. So we have the definition for nursing home, I think, right here.
Yep, so a nursing home is an establishment providing care for persons recovering from an illness or operation, or persons made weak or disabled by illness or injury. Such establishments must be duly licensed by the state as a nursing home in accordance with current state statutes.
Okay, so this, this suggestion would be making a nursing home or an assisted living home permitted outright in R3, the R3 and the R4 zones?
Nursing home in the R4 only, not in those others. Assisted living could be in the R3 and R3A also, and R4A.
Yes. Okay. Allowing more housing types? Thoughts? Questions? Go ahead.
I was just gonna mention the title, prohibiting single-family and some of the multifamily zones.
Okay. The next one. The duplex cottages. I have a question on that one. Your last bullet says to streamline the code and allow duplex cottages in all zones where cottage housing is allowed. Just a question, I think cottage housing is now allowed in all the zones. Is that wrong?
Except R1, and that's what the very first item was about.
Okay.
Suggesting that it be allowed.
Okay.
If I may?
Yes.
One thing about the duplex cottages is it, it allows for a more efficient use of space where you have cottages. Because right now, say you just have, you know, the standard setback between two units, that side yard areas, sometimes unusable. So by allowing duplexes, or I don't think this suggests triplex cottages, it allows them to be, you know, common wall, which allows more open space, more usable open space throughout the, the rest of the property, because the units are still limited in size. Correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, I think they would still be 1,200, limited to 1,200 square feet per unit. So that's one, one of the pros of this, but, you know, it's, again, just another suggestion.
Yeah, you can kind of see, if you just look at the site plan on the, on the screen, there's a, there's duplex cottages, a couple of them. There's actually a couple triplex options, but if, if, if those were detached, you certainly couldn't get those units in there, and there's a trade-off with open space. But John, yeah, John's correct that it allows more flexibility.
Ms. Graje?
I'm sure, thank you. I was just gonna mention, I think there was a question about where cottage housing is currently allowed. And it is in all residential zones except the R1 and the Old Town zone.
Oh, Old Town, okay.
Thoughts about that? I think we need to chew on all of these, but I appreciate bringing them up. Okay. How about the next? Oops. Turned my page the wrong way.
Madam Chair, I got a question to Bob.
Oh, Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, Bob, what's, what's the difference between 1,200 square foot, as far as the definition, 1,200 square foot cottage home versus a 1,200 square foot residential home? Just out of curiosity? Because they look, they sound and look alike in my head.
The difference between, can you clarify? The difference between a 1,200 square foot cottage and a 1,200 square foot residential home?
Basically, I want to get a permit for a 1,200 square foot cottage home, or I want to get a square foot, I want to get a permit for a 1,200 square foot house. So, I mean...
Oh, just a single-family house?
Yeah. What, what's, what's the delta there? And as far as definition?
Well, a, a single-family house, so if it's just one house on a lot, you're free to, as long as you meet the building code and your zoning standards, it's, they're the same thing, except for if it's the only one on a lot, it just counts as a full dwelling unit. If it's one by itself, it's not a cottage, because a cottage has to be in the cluster and meet those standards. So functionally, they're the same size, but because one's by itself, it's a regular single-family home. The other one, because it fits in a cottage cluster and it meets all those standards, it qualifies as a cottage. That's the difference.
So since you brought up duplex, what's the delta between a duplex, because now you've got multiple units on a single property, so you have a duplex cottage versus a duplex? Or is it because there's additional duplex cottages on the same lot? Like, so you'd have four?
Well, in, in the cottage arrangement, again, you could do, well, this is saying, it's trying to get you to allow for those, but you have to, you have to meet all the standards again. It can't be more than 1,200, the individual unit, it's gotta be clustered around the open space. You're limited to how many cottage units in a cluster, and all those things. Otherwise, if you've got, depending on what your code says, maybe in the R4 zone, you could do, you know, multiple duplexes on a larger lot. You could, you could do that, but since you're allowed to do multifamily, you know, you're kind of wasting your money, and it'd be more efficient to just build a, you know, an apartment building than a bunch of small clusters, because that's more expensive and costly to do and probably not gonna get the return, same return. I don't know if that answered your question, but I, it's my stab.
Can I take a shot?
Yeah.
Please.
Sure. So cottages really only come to play when you're using the development regulations to allow cottages. There's, like Bob was saying, there's no functional difference between a 1,200 square foot, single-family home and a 1,200 square foot cottage. Cottages are just a term that we use when we're talking about a development of multiple units on a lot. You can always just build a single-family house in a residential lot. We don't have any limit on the size of a house. So like, you can put as much house, a single-family, any size, single-family house, as long as you meet your setbacks, height restrictions, and lot coverage requirements and parking requirements. So the cottages, because they're restricted, that's why, that's why they, you would allow multiple on a lot. So instead of having, say, a 4,000-square-foot house on a, on a 800 or 8,000-square-foot lot, you can get multiple cottages. So the idea is you're allowing more units on, more families to live in, on the same lot than a single-family lot. Now, you also brought up the duplex cottage. The duplex cottage isn't allowed right now, so right now cottages have to be separate units and meet setbacks from each other. This would allow you to have common wall between duplex units, which, you know, is just more flexibility in the way you do cottages, if you choose to do a cottage development. Does that explain?
Mr. Dretzky?
Is the property being developed upon 32nd and D a cottage property? So that's what, six units in there?
I, I just want to say, I think the idea of a duplex cottage is kind of a good idea. Because I, I think the, 32nd and D is one example. I know, I don't like how they look in, in my city. And I think a duplex might allow for a, a more of a normal-looking home situation than a bunch of smaller ones. So I think that might be really worth looking at. That's my two cents. Oh, we want to know, yes.
I got, I got a question on that one for Mr. Coleman there.
Okay. Mr. Ryan?
So if we are having concerns, and I remember Bob brought this up, as far as design standards, so that would go into, would, do we have current design standards that we set for cottages? Or is it like, hey, I want a square box one with all glass face, and this one I want to have all shake? Is your allow, allowable and the same?
Yeah, we've got, there's design standards, particularly on, you'd need a porch that fronts the street, or in some cases, also needs to have a covered entry on the common open space. Those are the big things. And then there's some special height limits. So I believe that you can't do a, a straight-up two-story, a full two-story cottage. It has to be like a story and a half, the way the height is set up. So between the, the special height provisions and the porch provisions, those really dictate that it's gonna have to be kind of a gabled, most likely a gabled formed structure. You know, we don't... know, we don't really get into whether it's metal siding, or wood, or whatever the siding is, we don't get into that level of detail, or what shape the windows are.
Required elements.
But the form elements are definitely there. If that helps.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, let's keep going here. This is the single-room occupancy, co-living rather than SROs. Any thoughts about that? Would that help with our, I don't know the right term, the, something about the equity, the language in our comprehensive plan, by changing the language to co-living from single-room occupancy?
I'm not certain of that, but this is just being, trying to be consistent with the terminology in the state law. So that's what I would recommend, just being consistent with the terms used in the state law, and so developers, if cities use a similar term, then it's just easier for everybody.
Okay, so that's, that's one that we should put an asterisk, that this is required?
Yes.
Got it. And then your next slide just explains what it is. Oops.
No, this is examples, there's four slides, this is just.
Oh, I see.
Examples of them. This slide was simply what the law was, and what the compliance recommendation. This was just a description of what, what they are.
Okay. Questions? Nope, okay, let's keep going. Allowing more housing types. This is the supportive housing. This is, I have a.
This is.
Go ahead.
Well, this is the other required one from the state law, as it mentions up here.
Okay.
That we need to make some changes to basically allow these types in zones where multi-family is allowed.
And I think, Mr. Coleman, correct me if I'm wrong, when we heard about the land use findings, we found that we were required to have 48 supportive housing units, and that we currently have 30.
I want to say the number's 20, we have 28, I want to say, and yes, I think 48 is the number. I'm going to be giving an updated presentation on those numbers, and I think I just learned today that the number went up to 60. That we're, that we're expected to put in place zoning to accommodate 60 permanent supported housing, yes.
Do we have any idea why the number went up?
I haven't had, we haven't had our meeting to discuss it, we just got information saying, hey, there's some updated figures, and so I will be bringing that to the planning commission for them to, so we can review that in the public. But I'm speaking a little bit without a nut here, because that's just something that came through in my email, I was like, and I was looking through it, and haven't had a chance to dig deep on it yet. We'll definitely be talking about the housing numbers and how that fits into our land use strategy, I know we've talked about it a lot, but I want to bring it up one more time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ryan?
Mr. Coleman, does the family center count as a supportive housing?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Well, part, some of, some of the units, not, they've got a mixture of units there, but yes, there's definitely supportive housing there.
Okay, I think we're on to ADU regulations.
Chairman Martin?
Mr. Mills?
In the recommendations, I want to understand a little better, particularly the middle recommendation of removing the owner occupancy requirement, does that mean from the primary residence? That's a recommendation, not a requirement?
That's a requirement.
That's a requirement.
Yeah.
And we already, we already did that. So we still need to change our code to allow two ADUs by right on all primary, primarily residential zones. We need to clearly state that one parking space is required for ADU, and we need to change our limit from 900 square feet to 1,000 square feet for the ADU.
And that's required for cities of less than 25,000?
It's, I don't know what the lower threshold is, but we definitely, or if there even is a threshold, but it definitely applies to Anacortes, yes.
Yeah.
It's the middle housing ordinance, the middle housing legislation that does not apply to us. So, as we go through this, most of these, if we're in, I think Bob talked about this earlier, if we're in a city of 30,000, we'd be having to do most of the things that are suggested in our HAP. But we're, we're reviewing these middle housing options to see which ones we might want to do to help encourage more housing.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, Mr. Coleman, did, are we still, and I think that we, you made the comment, I was thinking outside of the box, but are we still allowed to, with owner occupancy being removed, but still the owner, are we allowed to have conditional requirements? For example, they have to be a resident of Anacortes, or they've had to live on the property for two years prior, versus, I am from New York, I'm going to buy three of these, essentially with the idea of buried verbiaged triflexes.
I'm not sure that I followed, but the state legislation says that we can't have an owner occupancy requirement, so I don't recall how you were wordsmithing something that might get around that, so I can't really answer your question, I'm afraid. How do we police?
I don't, yeah, I don't imagine there's a way you could do that.
Okay. I think we're moving on to updating minimum lot sizes for duplexes. So currently duplexes are in lot sizes of 9,000 square feet, option three would allow them in 6,000 square foot lots. What do we think of that?
I mean, the diagrams on the next couple of slides look reasonable, it's hard to, you know, scale, maybe compared to seeing it on the 9,000 lot, but.
Okay. Any other thoughts, questions? I mean, I know that this is really a first run-through, that really just starting to think about these items. Hey, there's several examples there.
As a point of interest, I do have a question.
Mr. Dretzky?
What's the footprint cover, max coverage on a lot that's allowable, either for this provision or even a single-family house?
Libby's got the code in front of her, so I can't remember offhand what the, what the lot coverage is, but the setbacks and, and height. Libby, can you elaborate?
Yep, I'm pulling it up right now. So in the R2A zone, there is a maximum lot coverage of 40% right now, so.
Okay. All right, let's keep moving. Updating minimum lot sizes.
Can I go back one slide, ma'am?
Sure.
Back there, that one. I was just going to say, for John, I don't know, I mean, because again, like I said, getting hit with all this, I know it's got my heartbeat going. The incremental implementation, though, no, sorry, I went forward now, that actually made me feel better and makes sense, I'm wondering if there's any, any way in our plan, you know which slide I'm talking about at this point? The one that just says realistically, it's expected that middle housing development under such updated codes to be slow and incremental.
Oh, yeah.
I guess I'm just trying to make a comment, and maybe, maybe a question for John, is there a way, because that makes sense, and it kind of helps frame this a little bit, I'm wondering if there's a way, either in messaging, or the way we write this, to make sure that it goes slow and incremental?
I like, I like that idea. It's interesting that economists have assumed that three or four homes per block might be modified or redeveloped with middle housing over 20 years. Kind of want to gauge your guys' experience in that, and we haven't seen a lot of infill, changes to laws to allow infill, so yeah, that does make, does make it seem much more palatable, and, I mean, when you look at the diagram, or the picture that's up there right now, showing, you know, a couple of middle housing interspersed into a large block, I mean, that, that kind of fits in a lot of older communities, maybe not, you know, in the west part of Anacortes, but in other parts of urban, small, even smaller urban cities, this is the pattern of development that you already see, where you might see a duplex mixed in with a bunch of single-family, and maybe a six-unit apartment on a corner somewhere. So, how do we, how do we require that? I don't know, that's a really interesting idea, maybe Bob can help us brainstorm ideas when we bring that back, if there's anything that we think might be reasonable. Thank you for the suggestion.
Sure, something, you know, you could, well, I will say what Spokane did, they, they adopted a pilot first that allowed, I think they allowed up to fourplexes on all lots, and they waited one year, and, you know, the first six months, there was almost nothing, just because no one was prepared for it, and then there were quite a few proposals, but, you know, nothing like, oh, you're suddenly going to get 10 per block, you know, on a whole citywide scale. They, they realized that, you know, this is going to work, we're not going to see a flood of these things, but we're going to see enough that it's worth doing and going to make an impact. And then they, they simply just adopted it permanently, because they, it was working, and the growth was manageable. So, that's the take I would do, I mean, you could, you could, conceivably, you could put some caps on it and say, no more than X per block, but that's probably, Libby and John probably won't like implementing that and tracking that every time a permit comes in, so I would, I would not recommend that, but, you know, if, if you all felt really strongly for it, and that was the only way it was going to adopt it, maybe that was something you consider, but I certainly wouldn't recommend it.
Thank you, let's, let's keep going. Okay, this is the R3 zone, duplexes, kind of hard to read, but looks like from 7,500 square foot current down to 4,500 square foot. We need our math genius, I think that's, that's about 40% less. Yeah.
Yeah, the bottom line, it's just simply making the duplex, minimum lot size the exact same as a single-family.
Right.
That's the gist of it.
Okay, it looks like we don't have any comments about that, but I bet we'll have comments on the next one. The next one is.
Yeah, a couple of things here.
Yes. Hey, gentlemen? What do you think about raising the base maximum height?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ryan?
I think I already said something about that. When it comes to the views in our city.
Yes, you did.
And versus it going, it's a right, versus conditional, so it is something that we bring up in the city, and if you're at a charcuterie table with your neighbors, it can be a hot topic, so, just for the record.
Okay.
For, for context, Bob, could you bring up where the R4 zone is, because this would apply to the R4 and 4A zones?
Let's see, I don't have a zoning map, I have that, I think I have that one, somewhere in here, I had that R4 area, but.
Yeah, between commercial and R.
Yeah, maybe it was way back here.
We have a zoning map behind us.
This is the best I got on this slide here, that, so there's that, this is that long strip between Q and R, south of 22nd, that's zoned R4, so that's the area we're talking about, and it, you know, gently slopes up a little bit, but you can, again, you can already go up to, the base right now is 40, but you can go up to 50 with a bonus in that area, so this is just adding five feet to that option.
Without the bonus requirement?
Yes.
Without, yeah.
I could bring up a zoning map, if you would like, but it'll cause me to stop Bob's screen from sharing.
Well, before you do that, is Fidalgo Flats in the R4?
Yes.
Yes. Everybody knows where that is.
It's generally a block and a half off of commercial, west of commercial, for about two or three blocks westward, pretty much running along commercial from Old Town, roughly the hospital. And then, then the area that Bob showed, also on the east side of commercial, on, along R, is also R4.
And in R4A, is that?
There's one cluster up.
There's one by the city shop, by the operations department of A. He turns into, yeah.
Is that where the, where the condos are now?
Yes.
Largely that area.
Then there's another area of R4A in Skyline.
Oh. That's around Yorkshire, Devonshire, is that R4A in Skyline?
No.
Down by the commercial district.
Oh.
Yes, so it's west of, south of Sunset. Do you want to see on the map, or do you want to keep going?
We, we say finish. Okay.
Oh, keep going?
Yeah, let's keep going. Next is the neighborhood commercial options. Do we have questions? From Mr. Beglin, Begford? My question is the need, what precipitates the need for commercial stores in the neighborhood? Is this, is what is behind it, the climate? Is this, is what is behind it, the climate to, you know, have things more walkable? Is that the idea? Because I don't know why, what's the need for it?
I would say the walkable communities, it's already a policy in your comp plans. We're just exploring it a little bit more.
Right.
But I, I don't know, maybe, Libby, if there's been any comments on this issue, but there's been a lot of national interest in this, that, you know, you have to go a long way before, there's a lot, you hear the term food deserts, where you don't have any stores near you. And so people, you know, like to be able to have to walk to things. But there's also an economic trend against it, even where, if and where these allowed, it certainly doesn't guarantee they're going to happen, because someone has to, again, take a chance and start a business and do that in an area that's not on, that's in a residential neighborhood. So it's kind of already challenged. But it's just one of those things that you might consider expanding options for. You know, as far as the list of important things you need to deal with, this is probably down there, lower on the list, but it's, it's an item worth, worth looking at, that's all.
Appreciate that. Mr. Ryan?
No, just to talk about that a little bit more, because you asked that question. I don't know if you're familiar, being in, like, Ballard or Fremont, you go, you cruise along, and all of a sudden here's this like random coffee shop and a small bakery, a small sandwich place, and everybody in the neighborhood just mingles there.
Yeah, yeah.
I would look at it in a benefit where some of these areas that don't have those connecting points, it might provide a better outreach. I don't know, just as, as I've seen in effect elsewhere, I'm still trying to picture it here.
Okay. Mr. Coleman?
Anecdotally, we've had one request for somebody to turn a small house in an area that's on a corner into like a very small grocery, it would probably be like just a portion of their house. And, you know, we said no. This, I think, would probably enable it. I don't know. I don't really have a strong opinion on this one, though.
It brings up a question, actually, Mr. Dretzky asked just before the meeting, but it is something, all of these, whether it's the ADUs or a neighborhood store or whatever, if there are HOAs that would prohibit whatever it is, what prevails? Does the HOA prevail, or does the new law prevail?
Well, I can comment on, this is a big issue with the HB 1110 and middle housing, and they concluded that if there is an existing CCNR that, that disallowed duplexes, that you couldn't get by that, that HB 11 and these rules couldn't override a pre-existing HOA rule. You couldn't enact new ones. Sure, if there's, so I assume that the same standard apply here, is if there's some pre-existing provision saying, no, you can't have a corner store here, that you're probably not going to be able to do it. But if you suddenly, if the code changes, you can't, after the adoption date, put together an HOA rule after the fact.
Okay, that, that's helpful to me, at least. Yes. Okay. All right, let's keep going. Whoa. We almost, we're almost at the end.
That's, that's it.
That's it.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. We appreciate this first look. Gives us a lot to think about, for sure, and talk with our neighbors about. Any other comments from Commissioner? Mr. McCombs?
I just have one question about, I guess, going back to the ADUs, if, if there's a restriction on coverage on a lot size, or a lot, say 40%, and the existing dwelling is already taking up that 40%, do the new laws allow additional structures that are ADUs on that lot?
Well, you wouldn't be able to exceed the 40%, so it's not an exemption from your lot coverage rule. So you have to still work within those, those provisions.
Thank you.
So that's, yeah, it's going to be a, especially for doing detached, your better chances are to go up and have an attached one and maybe have a detached one over, you know, if you've got a garage, putting it over top. So they're going to have to be strategic and shoehorned in to fit the code. Sometimes it's not going to be easy.
Or, of course, you could convert part of your house to an ADU.
Yeah, yeah. That's easier.
So, thank you again. So let's just talk for a second about next steps. So, Mr. Coleman, is it your intention to bring each one of these back for a public hearing, one at a time, or a few at a time, or what's, what's your intention?
Well, there's still several other HAP recommendations that Makers is going to review, so we should probably go through those in a similar fashion that we're doing now, presuming you like doing it this way, instead of, you know, the other option would be, you know, we bring you actual code changes for you to look at and... Seeing head nods in a no direction, seeming that you like this kind of general overview discussion with somebody from Makers to hold our hands and explain what it really means and help you understand what's being presented, helping the public understand what's being presented, and you asking a lot of questions. And then, then it would stand to reason that after Makers completes their presentation of the remaining HAP recommendations that we didn't get to tonight, then bring back some or all of the code changes for public comment and public hearing. It does seem like a lot to present at one public hearing, Bob, so we'll probably have to strategize on how we're gonna, how the best way to do that will be. What, as a, as a way of recapping what we've seen tonight, we didn't receive any strong direction from the Planning Commission saying not, like, to make any changes to the recommendations. So pretty much the recommendations that Bob has presented, when we do present those in a code change form, are going to look very similar to what you've presented, what you've seen here tonight, because I haven't heard any strong objections to go one way or another. And then we can change them, we can still change them once we present them for a public hearing.
I guess, I don't know that, at least I'm just speaking for myself, that you would hear tonight, strong recommendations one way or another, since it's really the first time we've seen it. So...
I'm going to do the same thing, Madam Chair.
Okay.
First time, and that was what, I was under the guise that, hey, here, we're going to talk about this tonight, not that we're going to get strongly opinionated and thumbs up or thumbs down, anything. That was my, that's what I presumed. I could just be on my own on that one.
Okay. Head nods.
Yeah, that seems very fair. And, you know, when we bring it back, then you'll have time to have digested it, talk to whoever you talk to about these things and...
Will we also have recommendations from the Planning Department?
Typically.
Right. Mr. McCombs?
Madam Chair, I think it's worthwhile to engage the public sooner, rather than wait, or wait until, I'm afraid that if, if you're, if you're trying to draft laws or, you know, new codes, then it's, you're going to be playing, go find a rock, and oh, that's not the right rock, go find another rock. So I think it's worthwhile, and, you know, I think these are interesting in the way they're presented. A lot of them seem reasonable to me, but I would also really like to understand how people in R4 feel about that, or the people in R2 and R3, what their thoughts are about, you know, duplexes by right, or, you know, a nursing home, because I'm not really sure, or a grocery store. So I guess I would, I think the sooner we can engage with some public comment, and that might help us craft the code more efficiently, because we would maybe have some considerations to add to the code right from the beginning, rather than try to re, put edits into what you're, what you're drafting. But that's just my thought.
So is it, I think what I'm hearing from you is still support for us to bring back the remaining items that are in the HAP for review like we did tonight, and we understand that'll be not presented by Bob, it'll probably be presented by Marcus or Scott at Makers. And then after we've gone through that process with the Planning Commission, then we can bring something that's really, something to look at and get public comment on that, and you can engage more forcefully in a discussion about it.
I, I think, I think yes. And, and I think if we held a public hearing on one or more of these, we certainly could keep the public hearing open. So, you know, we wouldn't have to finish it in one day, and that would give us the opportunity to hear from the public and help to inform our own thinking. So, yes.
Yeah, I think, you know, when we're having public hearings, we're not going to be able to do however many we did tonight, 15 or so. We're not, you're not going to be able to plow through 15 in one night as people are coming up and having a dialogue, a discussion, presenting their ideas and comments. So, yeah, we'll, we'll have to do fewer items per night. And so it's going to be a grind for the Planning Commission, and that's what you signed up for. Hope you, hope you're ready.
That's what we signed up for. That's why we get paid the big bucks. Well, do we get paid, is the question. Mr. Mills?
Chairman Martin, thank you. Kind of reviewing in my mind how this process went this evening, starting with an agenda bill that said discussion only, but you were actually seeking feedback. Our new rules of operation allow us to have work sessions. And I'm wondering if the next batch, just open it up for thought, the next batch of recommendations for us to consider, perhaps in a less formal setting, where we're sitting around the table, Q&amp;A-ing to understand these as we go through them, rather than sitting back on a presentation. May not, may work, may, or may not work, but just something to think about as we come to the next group of these.
This was presented as a discussion item in the agenda.
Your pardon?
This was, this was listed as a discussion item.
Right.
So that's the discussion, like, not expecting you to make any decisions tonight, but yeah, you can give us direction as part of your discussion. There's no reason...
I think he's talking, what we really received was more of a presentation than we went over and saw if there were any questions or comments. I think what you're talking about is more literally chatting about these as they come up. A little more informal, maybe.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Anything else on this topic? Mr. Coleman, are you feeling like, do we have some direction?
Oh, absolutely. No, I think this went really well. I think, I think you gave the kind of direction that we would expect it from a first-time presentation. And I guess my comment was, I didn't see anybody's eyes pop out of their heads and say, oh my gosh, like, heck no on these. So we'll, you know, we'll continue, we'll, we'll continue to the discussion with the remaining HAP items at the next Planning Commission meeting, and then we'll bring back these items in little smaller, digestible pieces for public comment.
Great. Then I'm going to move on to item six, Planning Department update.
You know, I thought about this earlier, and there's nothing really new to update you on.
That's, that's fine. Yes, it's 8:05. With nothing else to update, then item seven is adjournment. Call meeting adjourned.